Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to October 25th, 2021, here on our Lord of Scots for Common Council. And we'll call our meeting to order tonight. And we begin each meeting with prayer, the pledge of allegiance. So if you wouldn't mind a stand. I will pray. There's been, there's been two, before I begin, there's been two members here that have been close to many of us that have passed away this week in Free Red Force One and then Barb Gary, who works in the town office. Her brother just passed away as well, so you might keep him in your prayers as well. Father, we just come before you tonight on this Monday night, the 25th of October. We thank you for the day you've given him to us, Father. Father, it's just been a joy to walk the pilgrimage of life this day, to enjoy a cool fall day and the leaves starting to turn and, and just the crispness of it. Father, and we hate, well, fall is just a beautiful season. We just hate to see another year pass. But Father, it is a joy to spend each day with you, Father, with those who walk the pilgrimage of life with us. And Father, it's just good to see smiles and children laughing and playing and, Father, just our schools humming and kids learning and, Father, we just lift this up to you. We pray, Father, for these who we've mentioned today as well as having been lost in our city and our county and, Father, and we pray for their families. We lift them up and just pray your closeness for them. We pray for those who are afflicted now with COVID. Father, we've had 44 new infections this week and we pray for their healing as well. We pray for our city, Father. We pray for your protection, for your blessing, Father, upon us. I pray for the men and women here, Father, that you would bless them with your grace and your mercy, Father, and your wisdom and your spirit of discernment, Father, in all of these areas, that we might represent the people well that we represent. We love you, we praise you, Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The Lord is blessed here. Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda is our rule call from our clerk treasurer, Jan Harrow.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hugland.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here.
If you look to the north, you will see on item five, the approval of the minutes of September 27th, '21. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? How's that being, please?
I'm with the motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motion. Is her second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds. Is there any questions or comments before we go forward? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing we have is item six up here, and that's the public comment area. The Scottsburg City Council accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council are being asked to come forward and state their name to the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone this evening who would like to come forward for public comment? Please, please.
So I got some handouts for you guys first, although we're counting towards my five minutes.
Way in.
So my name is John Edmonton. I'm a business owner here on Square. I'm sure you all know that one out of the park decor. I'm going to announce that. So, and also, if my Mexico people might be. So my stance is that you guys do not own parking spots in front of buildings. And here I've bulleted out some various reasons. So if you go on the back of this, there's the original plot of the city. There's also a deed to the Sandy Owens Building and a copy of the deed for, I'm sorry, there's a survey of Sandy Owens Building and a deed from our buildings. So if you look at that, it clearly states that there's a 30-foot right-of-way that the city owns around the park track. The right-of-way typically is used for cars and driving and is not legal to park in, per Indiana statute. The Modern Survey shows the same information, 30-foot right-of-way, it does not, if you go out there and measure, that's way more than 30 feet if you talk about the parking spots. The deeds also are referenced back to the original plot. They do not reference anything else. There's also no recorded deeds or titles. I've done title searches on it, it's not there. Also, if we look at contract law, the parking spots exceed a value of $1,000 in terms over a year. So if there's anything, any agreement between the business owners and the city that would have been reported, there's no documentation for that item. So again, my stance is you guys do not own parking spots in front of our buildings. If you go on down and we read our Fifth Amendment rights, it also states that no public entity shall take private property without just compensation. Unless the city can show any record of just compensation being given to the city or to the merchants, you don't, you don't own it. So I am putting in here that this is my cease and desist, trying to control the parking spots in front of my properties and the ones that I represent, which is 36th Ave., 76th East Wardell, 89th East Wardell, 29th West Wardell, and 31th West Wardell. Any other further actions are done and try to stop or limit my parking spots, I will seek legal action against the city. So, and then the next question I'm going to bring up, if you try to say that, well, we paved those for you, well, you also paved the county parking spots. And I don't hear anybody in here saying that you own the county parking spots. Has that ever been a point of conversation? So as we go forward, I'm just saying, those my parking spots for me to be with is S E two. So that's my stance. Do you have any questions for me?
Item, what do you mean county parking?
So that would be the interim ring of what we call the square, the interim ring of the square.
Okay.
That's typically been referred to as county parking spots. They own those, you do the same level maintenance on their spots as you do on our spots, correct? So, okay, that's my stance.
Okay. Does anybody else have the time who'd like to come forward? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the, on the comment section. Do we have anything for old business? Okay, hearing none, let's go on down then. Sorry, I guess. This would be the third reading in old business, ordinance 2021-23, an ordinance amending the schedule of rates and charges collected by the Scottsburg Department of Water Works and steadily new rates and charges for the Scottsburg Department of Water Works and other matters connected therewith. So this is the third reading. We have a motion to pass this ordinance on third reading.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Albertson seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Unanimous? Pass on third reading. The second thing on old business is asking council to rescind Form Four on ordinance 2021-26, budgets for 2022. That was adopted on September the 27th, 2021, and approved the amended Form Four. So I'm going to turn this over to our clerk treasurer so she can explain this, on the council, and also to everybody out here as well.
The good news is, when the DLGF contacted me, was we had adopted our budget early, so this could be corrected. So what had happened was the adopted tax rate was pulled over wrong, moved a decimal point for one of our funds that receives tax dollars and gets a tax rate. And that was in our Parks and Recreation. And the tax rate had been pulled over into Gateway as .0148, and it should have been .1477, which would have shorted the amount of dollars that would have been coming into that fund. We could have gone back, because we do have cash and have gotten, we could have gotten it, but it would have taken additional appropriation. Ryan from the DLGF says this, he walked us through the process and, you know, what we needed to submit and just what we put here in asking you to rescind what we had approved on September 27th with this new corrected form as what I needed to bring before you tonight.
Questions, council have about this? Any?
I'm at motion that we rescind the Form Four that we previously approved and, can we do it in one vote? I guess that would be my question, or do we have to do two separate? Josh?
So they're not asking us to rescind the ordinance, they're just asking us to rescind.
To rescind.
Yeah, to, to rescind. So I, yeah, we imagine, we're not actually doing it in ordinance, we wouldn't be setting it for our rules for smart.
So I can just do it all at once. So I make that motion to approve the amended form. Rick Mans makes the motion to rescind Form Four on the original one and then approve the amended form. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rose seconds that. Questions, comments, concerns about this? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Hearing none, unanimous? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I'm going to pass this down, this is, we definitely get everyone to sign and mark if it was A or N, please.
Okay, now, we're going to go into new business, the first reading of ordinance 2021-30, an ordinance designating certain areas of the city of Scottsburg as an economic development target areas, as recommended by the Scottsburg Economic Development Commission. So this is, this is an area where we're looking here to develop single-family housing. That's why this is here. So, and this would be utilizing TIFs.
Establishing the TIFs in those areas.
And if we're just, these areas are just to be targeted, and that would be a, sorry, on that. So, is there a motion to go forward on first reading of 2021-30, an ordinance death warning service?
I'm with you.
Chuck Rose makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? No opposed? Unanimous? The council's pleasure to suspend the rules. Are you want to go this on second, third?
Yeah, I guess we're allowed to do that. You are, I don't think. Some you are, some you aren't. But I'm making the motion.
I'll make the motion that we suspend the rules.
Rick Mans makes a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2021 and pass on.
We have to make the motion to suspend the rules, and then a second, third, a motion for second, third, I think.
There you go, yes, exactly. So Rick Mans makes it.
I'm just going to have to take it, but I get there eventually.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian has a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Hearing none, passed. Now, what do we need?
I'll make the motion if it's second, third, reading, but tied up.
Chuck Rose makes a motion to second, third, reading, but tied up. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You hold them seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Unanimous? So that passes. The next thing we have, folks, on new business is B, the first reading of 2021-31, to rezone West Area Lane, PC-14-V21, and that will bring forth Ms. Carmen Bulley. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. I don't really have a presentation or anything for you guys, but I'm happy to answer any questions, the basics of this. I don't know, you guys know where Carriage Place is, the subdivision. Okay, this is on the left corner going in. The owners want to split the property and basically, in order to do that, they needed to rezone first. It's on agriculture, and you can't have less than two acres of agriculture, so they're just wanting, they're just wanting to rezone to residential. And the advisory committee commission sent you guys a favorable recommendation. You know, sewer lines are available to them, if you guys have any other questions, that will help me to answer.
You said that that's two acres, that's a two-acre lot?
Yeah, there are trees behind the house and then the lot behind it, it's all grasses also there, so that's what they would separate off of.
But that's not, excuse me, that's, most of the lots out there are two acre.
Most of the ones, the whole subdivision is two acres a lot.
Are they?
Yeah.
It's on the corner when you drive.
Right, I got that. I just, I looked at it, I didn't realize that it was behind the wood area, I mean, I thought.
Yeah, they're all two acres.
I'm so glad, but I said that's not two acres.
They're all shaped differently as well, they're not similar.
And they, and we pass that recommendation with the promise that they would hook to the sewer lines, because the reason the two-acre lot is because of Septic. And Regional Sewer District goes there, and the owners promised that they would hook to the sewer line.
The Regional Sewer Line is correct.
And I've got the confirmation from Regional Sewer, they can, so there won't be issues there.
So that they're on Septic system now?
No. That's a subdivision, and so they would just extend the line and act like it's already available, so.
Comes this West Area right on the bubble?
Yes.
Okay. I don't realize you're two acre lots here, Chuck.
Yeah, a lot of her shape kind of like triangles almost.
I know that's going into a lift station, maybe even a forced name, and I talked to the owner, he said they could take another 150 houses.
Well.
Exactly, much of it.
Do we have a motion then to pass this rezone of West Area?
I'll make the motion.
Chris Albertson makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian has a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Unanimous? Thank you.
States that you only require one reading on rezones.
Rezones, okay.
And our rules acknowledge that.
Okay. So the next thing is item C, first reading of ordinance 2021-32, rezone of 871 South Gardner, PC-13-V21, again, this garden.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so this is just the property, if you guys know, our auto be yours is on 31. There's a driveway south of it and the driveway leads back to this property, it's kind of hidden between some there. It's currently sound industrial, but there's a pole barn on it and the owner of Auto B Years wants to open it up to build his own house, and then he also wants to have a garage where he can fix some cars and stuff in his spare time, so that's why he's wanting to rezone it to residential, a little over two acres, but do you guys have any questions? The council has a favorable recommendation.
He wants to rezone the entire parcel to residential?
Yeah, the entire parcel. Our attorney.
I was just wondering what that would do to this business, how many feet?
It's not the parcel of the house Auto B Years on it, it's a separate parcel. If he has, it mentioned the business in here, our attorney, Mr. Fiker, said that it would be all right if he did care.
I think, Chuck, this was his property, that was that house, from that house at San Vigo.
Well, and I was wondering too, if he has a garage on there, if that, I mean, if he just wanted a good garage to work on his own, if he were going to have.
I think he wants to build a home there, to, to.
He's building a new home for the garage, he's going to redo it and remodel it some and make it more usable, he's, that's not in good shape right now.
Other questions from this Bulley on this, on this property? Okay, hearing none, is there, is there a motion that we go forward and rezone this property here on East 71 South? I'll make the motion. Bill Holden makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rose seconds. Any questions, comments, concerns on this property? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
What? I guess, I thought you had one more. You don't have, you don't have the bubble.
No, I only have two.
Okay, the next thing we have is reading ordinance 2021-33, an ordinance establishing a policy on mobile concessions. So, the council's had time to read through all of this and consider this. Mr. President, we'll give this to you to watch you, want to ask whatever question you want.
I'm fine.
Is there a motion?
I have a chance to look at it.
Quite a chance to read this, sir. Is there a motion to pass this as presented?
I'll make the motion pass on first reading.
Chuck Rose makes a motion pass on first reading. Is there a second?
You know, I'd like to table this for just, so we can discuss the issue of mobile concessions up on the square.
Okay.
In lieu of what has just been presented, I think we just need to kind of touch base.
And I'm fine with that, but I, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be very, because I still think.
You think so?
The ordinance, but.
I just wanted to make sure before.
And I'm fine, I didn't intend to try to pass it on one reading, not any.
Okay.
We can, we can invite you, but we can, I have no problem taking.
We can go ahead with the first, I'll have it to the first reading if everybody else is, and then we can, I'd like to talk to Josh and just make sure.
I, I think we need to, you know, obviously, make sure we have.
I want to be cautious.
To me, I, you know, I just think with all the, the other issues that we've had on this topic, it would be nice to have something in place.
Okay, I'll make a motion on first reading. Or did you even round seconds?
We're going to get a second?
I'll second.
There we go.
I guess there's a point of clarification on this, too. Regardless of ownership within the ordinance, this is just stating that if, if the food truck or mobile concession as defined is on city property, so no matter what happens on the square, if it's, if it's owned by the private entity, we already have the ordinance that states private, if it's on private property, this is not affected. So this is not only square, Lake Iowa Beach Wood.
I just, I just want to.
No, no, absolutely, absolutely. I just want to make sure that that's, you know, because even if we do pass this, you know, obviously, we're going to pass it on for free, but the ownership question can be discussed at a later point. This ordinance would affect that depending on who was.
I'm on forward that, I just.
No, no, for sure. I was just kind of thinking out loud more than anything, so.
Well, that's kind of what I, my, my thinking of table was kind of fucked up.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And if you don't have one of these, does anybody, would anybody like a copy of this ordinance? I'd like to get you a copy if you don't have one.
It should be on the city website, should it?
Yeah, it's on the, sure, so, okay. So first by Chuck Rose, second by Rick Mans. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Yeah, just a clarification, I mean, there's no fees associated with this ordinance, I mean, I'm right there, I just, public clarification. We're not asking that anybody apply for new permit or anything like that, there's no new fees, no new permitting associated with it. It's just to protect us and protect those, the pedestrians, the traffic, the roadways for city property.
If they were, it even states if they could operate on city property, they would just have to be permission given.
Permission, correct. Any other conversation? Ready, go. Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, passing unanimous on first reading. I'm assuming we'll not go to any other readings, we'll split that whole.
Right.
There, so the next thing we have is announcements to discuss the December meeting being on the 27th, which is a holiday. Ms. Ray, you want to explain that?
Well, the way the Christmas holidays fall this year, we will, we will be off on Friday and on Monday, so, and looking ahead, and your end is coming up on us quickly, so we just wanted to see when council would like to meet, and we did bring this up at Board of Works, and they will keep their schedule along with what council chooses.
What is council's up?
I'm hoping to, about anything, I, I know a lot of times there are last-minute things that need to be taken care of.
Do we want to do like we did for Fall Break, if we need a meeting on the 3rd Monday?
It would probably be better to do it on the 28th, just because of year-end, maybe anything that's, yes, we know that would be better for us at Board of Works, because we'll probably leave this.
I would say if the, at the end of the year, there are a lot of loose ends.
We'll probably still have to do an individual docket, just.
How about we tentatively move the meeting to the 28th, and if there's no business that needs to be addressed, then we can cancel that meeting. How about that?
So that's, that's another motion to, to forward and move the meeting on December 27th to 28th. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Christian has a second. Have we, have we got one of those?
I don't know.
No, everybody's.
Absolutely, we're all, so let's just move to the 20th.
Tell her.
Oh, you're right here, you're going to be on December 28th, come on up on there. And what other, what other announcements do we have?
I just, I'd like to ask a question. Carrie, we had in the packet a resolution from the Economic Development Commission, and that addressed the Economic Development Target Areas as well. Is that something that needs to be addressed as well, or is that, should that have been the ordinance, or, I just don't want to leave anything undone.
It, it will be an attachment, that, you know, what Carrie has instructed is that that resolution that was in there, that needs to be included in ordinance 2021-38 as attachment.
Okay, so we're, we're good with that, I mean, I just want to make sure that we, we didn't need to pass a resolution of this into the ordinance. Okay, I'm good.
No, that was just a copy of what had been passed by that Economic Development.
Thank you.
I'll start by Edward.
What else? Anything else, John?
I do have one thing, there's been a, I had a couple constituents have called about code enforcement, and I know we have new code enforcement officers, they've been doing a great job. One of the concerns they have, kind of a concern that I would share with them, is they have been cited a few times, in some, in most cases, rightfully so, but nearby property owners that are commercial businesses have not been cited. I know we've had this discussion before, but it's been, you know, quite a while since we passed that ordinance now, we've probably had enough time to get up on our feet, I believe, talking to Josh, the ordinance that we passed would enable us to cite commercial properties if need be. So I just, for the record, want to make sure that we are emphasizing citations on commercial properties just as much as we are residential properties, because, you know, one of the, one of the constituents of mine actually asked a question that I didn't have an answer to, he said, you know, if I've cited up my residence and I own the business, do I just take my trash to the business with no fear of being cited? And I said, well, I don't, I don't know exactly what the ordinance does, but it does seem that, you know, per Josh's conversation, that they could be cited if their, their, you know, property was not up to par, so I just want to make sure that emphasis is the same.
I'm going to give you another detail on that, because basically, the, if you go to intersection 3156, the station, and I meant to have, we have all kinds of pictures, we're going to show you before and afters, okay? So we're actually kind of going a new way here, because basically, they're going to receive a warning, and, and then, in so much time, then they'll receive a ticket, and then if they don't still have that, then, then we'll go to court and get a, a paper that we can clean it up.
For sure. And that's, and that's what's doing, being done for residential as well, right?
It is, and, and so we just mentioned, we are looking at commercial, that, that station right there on the northeast corner, we topped the owner there, if you notice there, we had pictures that shows you all the trash, it was against that guard rail and all this stuff, it's all cleaned up. Going down next to the, the next one we had was, we've had, we've had three ongoing. We have several we are working with right now, which I'm probably sure I know what you're talking about, but that has been ongoing issue as well.
I, and again, I know.
We are not giving any favors in here.
No.
We start with all, because we want everybody to be scot-free and be proud. And the way we can do that is by cleaning up our places and maintaining that. And, so yeah, absolutely. So I want to assure you, council, that everybody in that area, because I know the area you're talking about, I'm assuming that's what you're, that's what you're talking about.
Well, one of the couple area, I didn't. Well, one of the couple area, and throughout the city, I just want to make sure that, you know, the residential properties and commercial properties are held to the same standard.
We have, we have another one that was, uh, over by the liner car wash. That property was against site, and, and they've cleaned that up as well. So we've had two properties that we've taken picture before and after, uh, and that's what we're doing, we're taking residential, uh, commercial properties before and after pictures.
And I, and I would say that anyone that owns property, and, and my family owns quite a bit of property, and it's this city and Austin, and, and we try to keep it to where we don't affect the property value of properties. And that's all we're asking.
Yeah.
It is, and you know, whether it's a residential or whether it's commercial, I think that's, that's what you want.
Yeah, yeah. But I think the other thing too on that is, is that we need to make sure that we're appearing to a zone ordinance that I would like to see updated, and we've talked about the past, I know we haven't been around to, but I think making sure that those properties are, are zoned a certain way, that we hold those to the, the standard that they are, you know, we can't obviously discriminate against where they're zoned and how, what business they have, but, uh, you know, the, the actual state statutes, you know, unsafe building, right? So that's, that's what we're going for here, literally unsafe, it's not something that we see stuff and we're like, oh, we're picking, you know, citation here, citation there, just wanted to make sure that it is, because it's a concern, there's some constituents had, and I didn't really have an answer to say, you know, I, I get your concern.
Yeah, and, and by all means, make sure you get that to mayor's office, we'll make sure that we, we can give you documentation, we'll be done, if we have that, we will get on. And, uh, because we, you know, uh, we do have, uh, an individual who was actually giving these warnings, writing citations at this point. We have a situation where we've got a defining procedure we do, so to get these problems over. And let me say this, and this, we want everyone to be proud of your property, so we're actually making some signs up, because we're going to, like, put it in the yard for a couple weeks, found Scottsburg proud, you know, so get a nice clean place, and there's so many people, I said, thank you for having your place look so nice, I mean, we want Scottsburg to, uh, just looks, smells, tastes clean. And, you know, it's like going into a hamburger shop, you know, that, you get that first bite of that hamburger, it's good, so we want, we're inviting people to coach here. We want folks from Albany, Farnsville, Jacksonville to move here to see what a great town Scottsburg is. So if you want to get out of the urban area, into rural area, we have, this is a great place to live, so we just want to make sure that everything's clean and nice and that's, that's our job. So thank you so much for that, we want to make sure we do this with commercial, with residential, and we won't, we won't get in the cross, we'll get you. So thank you so much, council. Uh, what else do we have? I will give you, like in the prayer I had, with, with contact Michelle, there were apparently 42 new COVID infections last week, we've been up over 200 in the second round. The second round came about and we got down to seeing digits, and all of a sudden the second round comes back with this variant, and we got well over 200, it's been coming down, this is the lowest we've had, down to 42, but we did have another bad this past week, uh, this was last week, and we had 98 last week, so we're down more than half where we were at last week, so we're going in the right direction. And, you know, and that's another thing, I meant to try to have, this has been a crazy day, to have those before and after pictures, I'm going to try to start putting some before and after pictures up on the monitor for us, so the people can see, you know, we've got a dozen houses and properties cleaned up like this, a couple of commercial properties and the houses cleaned up as well, so, uh.
I did just email that to the board.
Okay.
The slideshow, so you have the way.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
So we'll get it up on the board so everybody can see, because we want to, we want to encourage and help those who may be proud, but we also want to thank people who are compliant, so just to tell them how, how grateful we are, so, so, okay, anything else? Okay, then we will entertain a motion for adjournment if anybody would like to.
So move.
Okay, so we're adjourned.